Start with Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning.
Good morning.
Next I have is the approval of today's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve today's agenda.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next is approval of minutes for February 26.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes from the February 26, 2020 meeting as presented.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now is the approval of claims for payment. We don't have any yet this year or this week. So, let's move on to utility permits.
Got two utility permits this morning. I'd make a motion to approve utility permits UT-20-005 and 006.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Both are middle in power cooperatives. Any other discussion? Hearing no more, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, secondary roads.
Bernie Taylor.
We had to close a highway this morning. McDowell and Sons is doing a drainage district project. So, we had to close D-35 west of Steamboat today. They're hoping to get it done today. So, if it's just for the day, we're going to detour them south onto the gravel.
That's between D-41 and Steamboat, right?
Yes.
Stay up there.
All right, what you got now?
Uh, next is the amendment to secondary roads 2020 early retirement incentive.
Yep, so all I did on that was I just changed that to say, I changed the word to May to March. So, yep, I still currently only have one guy interested. So, nothing should change other than just a word on a piece of paper.
Okay. All right, so I will make a motion to approve the amended amendment to the resolution or the retirement incentive as presented by Engineer Taylor Rall.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? I think you covered that.
Yep.
Any other discussion? All in favor, roll call.
Renee. Aye.
BJ.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next is a resolution to approve the Iowa River Trail Region 6 Transportation Alternative Program Grants. Chris.
Hey, Chris.
Good morning.
I'm Chris Weeding. I'm the chair of the formerly known as the Iowa River Trail, now the Rivers Edge Trail, but for our grant purposes, we are still the Iowa River Trail under this Region 6 TAP dollars as we transition over. So, the resolution for the before you is to approve $150,000 of Region 6 TAP money that is coming due for trail projects this coming fall in November. This money will close the funding gap for our current bridge and paving projects. That project, those projects, as we've been talking about for the last year to two years now, has been under the scope of the pre-engineering. We were trying to get through the hurdle of combining two federal grants and one state grant into one project. And the hoops and the hurdles with that at the Iowa DOT, that challenge has been met and they have greenlit that consolidation of grants. And that makes this project a go. That was what was holding us up. We were hopeful to start and have engineering and bidding out the door here in spring. Unfortunately, that is going to be pushed to November. The timetable on the project shouldn't change much. If we go through November DOT bidding, the goal and hope would have bridge construction start over the winter of 2020, 2021, and paving early 2021 as soon as contracting and material can be completed there. And so, in the grand scheme of things, we were looking to, you know, our best case scenario timeline was to have the trail completed by winter of 2020. And we should have a trail fully paved from Steamboat to Eldora, plus an additional six miles of unpaved rough trail just north of Gifford by early summer 2021, right in time for people to actually get out and enjoy it. So, yeah, this closes the funding gap. We feel really comfortable. The consolidation of those DOT, the DOT with those grants also puts us in a very good position for prime bidding. And as we saw with the project in Steamboat Rock, we saved the state of Iowa roughly $125,000 on that. Unfortunately, we didn't get that back to be used for additional trail paving and building the way that the state works those grants. But, we are excited. A big year with the Iowa Ride and Ragbright coming through Harding County. We'll be leveraging that and have a big fundraising year planned ahead. So.
Perfect.
Throw a lot into that one resolution there.
You answered my questions on the timeline and stuff, so perfect. Thank you, Chris.
And Lance does not put any restrictions or limitations on the trail, other than it's a, we got a, we secure it for 20 years for trail purposes as.
For anything and everything.
What's that?
For anything and everything.
If we decide to do that, yes.
Yep. Sounds great.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks for the work you put into that.
Chris does a lot of work.
It's coming, it's a big, exciting year, so.
And hey, Chris, one more question?
Yes.
County has contributed nothing to this. You've been doing this on your own.
The dollar, yeah, Harding County has not had any actual budgeted tax dollars go into this project. So, it's been fundraised and grants to get us to this point, which is really unique in that aspect. On a side note, I think our board, and we're not trying to step into any political waters here, but we're really excited about Governor Reynolds' budget proposal and what that could mean for Harding County. I think that is, that's something that folks should be aware of as she goes out, and we'd hope that if it can work for her to stop through Harding County and see the work we've been doing and how unique it is compared to the other projects in the state, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the resolution to approve the Iowa River Trail Region 6 Transportation Alternative Program Grants.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Renee. Aye.
BJ.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next is the Sheriff's Monthly Report.
I'd make a motion to approve Sheriff McDaniel's monthly report as presented.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, we have a presentation by RWE Renewables regarding the wind energy project. Come on up.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, I felt left out.
Yes, thanks for having me here, I appreciate it. So, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to speak before you this morning. My name is Josh Odom. I'm a Senior Development Manager for RWE Renewables and the Lead Developer for the Harding County Wind Project. I'd like to take the next few minutes to explain a bit about the development process and where our project is currently with regard to a typical development timeline. I'd also address a few of the questions we've heard recently while speaking with community members in observing board meetings. Typically, a wind project location is selected based on three factors. Wind is a viable resource, meaning is it windy here? Access to the electrical grid system, do we have the ability to put the power on the lines here and is there capacity for it? And three, is landowner participation? Are there interested landowners that want to participate in leasing land for the project? We applied for met tower permits back in October of 2017 and have been studying the wind resource since the first tower was installed in December of 2017, collecting wind speed and directional data. Also in 2017, we held an informational meeting for landowners in our target area, which after, after which our land acquisition specialist, Betty Dossman, began meeting with landowners individually to determine their personal level of interest in hosting wind turbines. More than 500 letters were mailed out to landowners within our area of interest. Concurrently, we filed a position with the MISO Q, meaning we got in line for a study to determine the ability for the grid system to take on power here in Harding County. To date, we have more than 21,000 acres secured through private land lease agreements with over 100 participating landowners. The met towers have shown that there is a significant wind resource and we are committed to the next steps of the grid's Q process. So, we know now in 2020 that we have a viable project. Based on participation, winds and grid studies, we would like to develop a 200-megawatt wind farm within the project boundary area before you. I've got a handout that I'll provide in a minute. We'd like to see the wind farm operational by December of 2022, that's our goal. The next step in the development process is to work with the board to ensure that all of the county's questions and concerns are being addressed through open dialogue and written agreements or permits. We plan on applying for a conditional use permit in 2021, and we welcome the use of a development agreement with the county to ensure that all of the county's concerns and interests are fully discussed and agreed upon prior to construction of the farm. As we continue development, we will be completing bird and bat studies, wetland studies, completing ambient noise analysis, modeling noise and flicker from occupied dwellings, working with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services, the FAA and the Department of Defense to ensure that the project is sited in a responsible manner. These studies and agency reviews are in addition to the terms of the ordinance that you select to enforce here at the county level. RWE prides itself in being responsible in siting, construction and operation, and we plan to be here for all three as we anticipate being the owner and operator of the wind farm upon completion. Additionally, as we work with you in your role as county supervisors, we will also be working with the general public and neighbors of the proposed project to address their questions and concerns. We want to have respectful, effective, open dialogue and discussions with all stakeholders. Part of our outreach efforts involves a communications partner, which is Good Stuart Consulting. They specialize in public outreach relative to renewable energy. We brought them on board recently to assist us in addressing some of the general wind industry misinformation that has been spread on social media and through letters to the editor recently. We believe it is imperative to have a well-informed community while we continue on toward our 2022 operations goal. I provided a handout with some quick facts regarding the wind farm, which includes the economic impact that the proposed project will have to the area and specifically to Harding County. I'd like to note that in addition to the investment in studies that we've started and the cost associated with the Q position, to date, we have provided over $700,000 in payments to landowners in Harding County through our private lease agreements with them. We are significantly invested in this project and ask that you utilize us as a resource while crafting your revised ordinance as it pertains to protecting the county and allowing for successful private development. We recognize that the county is unique in many ways, including the existence of several drainage districts. We are committed to the execution of a development agreement to address drainage impacts. This agreement can and should commit the project to the study of existing drainage and to the complete and swift repair of any damages post-construction. We have 28 operational wind farms and extensive experience with prevention and resolution of drainage issues. Additionally, we have recognized the concerns of neighboring landowners with regard to the potential for drainage impacts on their land post-construction. We will have an operations and maintenance building within the project area and a site manager will be available to receive and address concerns from area property owners. We are amicable to the establishment of a written review and resolution process for the protection of neighbors as it pertains to perceived drainage impacts adjacent to participating land. If you'd like, I'd be happy to address any questions you may have at this time, otherwise I'll be here during and after the meeting as well. And I've got a couple handouts for you.
So, the handout, should, can we post that on our website so people could read that?
Ah, sure.
Which I think covers a lot of what you're talking about.
Thanks, Josh. Did you buy a house there in town yet?
It closed. Oh, this was in the back.
Here's some maps that show, outline the general area of interest.
Okay. The rings that you see around the airport is a three-mile and a five-mile buffer that exists around the airport.
Pete, you say you are going to be here afterwards and.
Yes.
Field a lot of questions. Does the board have any questions?
I don't, I just appreciate you guys being here and, and, you know, there's a lot of questions. This is your, the public's, another chance for the public to ask their questions, you know, so please do. So, Lance?
There's a rumor going around that your industry is wanting to raise levels of vibration and noise. Could you address the rumor?
I have not heard anything about this. The county can establish noise maximum levels in ordinance, so we abide by the, what, you know, what the county includes is typically between 45 and 60 decibels. Forty-five and 60 decibels. So, we abide by the county ordinance. I'm not aware of any rumors regarding vibrations or an increase in noise allowable levels.
Can you give us an example of what a 45 to 60-decibel noise is?
It's pretty much like when you're, the motor in your refrigerator turns on, if you're sitting in your living room and you hear the refrigerator kick on, that's equivalent or to a whisper. One thing too with modern, with more modern turbines, they're much quieter than the older turbines. They're higher up, they don't spin as quickly. Typically, if you go out to a site, you stand at the end of the access road on a windy day, you're not going to hear the turbine, you're going to hear the corn is noisier, or the wind in your ears is noisier than the noise coming from the actual turbine. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, strange question. Why is it when the wind changes, those things bang? For a long time, we thought we had some crazy neighbors, but it turns out it was evidently the noise from the wind generator?
It could be, there's big brakes on the top that hold, that lock in the cell in place. So, as the wind changes, there's an anemometer that's on the top of the turbine that lets, so we know which direction the wind is blowing from. And the hole in the cell, the brakes will unlock, the whole machine will turn itself to face into the winds and then reengage those brakes. That's probably what you're hearing, is just the mechanical noise of the brakes engaging or disengaging from the tower.
Is there anything that could be done about that?
Not really, it's not, I've never heard anyone actually complain about that noise. It's not something that's super frequent or super loud.
Is it they, just when they adjust and then once they're adjusted, they're locked in place?
Yes, ma'am.
They don't continually do that throughout the day?
No, it's not a frequent thing, because it's, as the wind blows, it changes angles, the turbine will stay, it's more when the wind significantly has an impact, then when it's more efficient, the machine will rotate to move into that. So, it's not a frequent occurrence.
Well, here, I will transfer a complaint of my husband. It scares the hell out of his little dog. She's a coward. But, yeah, she gets terrible when it happens.
Yeah.
Just a quick question, do the students at the Eldora schools complain about the windmill that is there, or has it had any adverse effects there?
I've never heard anything. I don't, I don't know that it's the, I think the size would be quite different between that and.
I mean, it's a wind generating, wind, or wind power right there at the school, and I don't think it's had any adverse effects.
I mean, I can hear it every once in a while from where I live, which is a few blocks away, but it's not.
That's an old enough.
Well, and it's, but it's, it's not.
Same thing.
I mean, I hear it, but I, it's not annoy, it doesn't bother me.
That would be, that Eldora would take that out.
So.
In answer to what the 60 decibels is, the conversation going on in this room has been averaging between 60 and 70 decibels.
No.
No, that isn't bad. They're trying to do anything with a dog plastered too.
My parents' dogs get scared when they see a deer in the backyard, so.
Oh, she wants to play.
Were there any more questions?
Anyone else? All right, well, thank you all for your time.
Thanks, Josh, I appreciate it.
And you will be here in case somebody does want to ask more. Well, from there, I have public comments.
Just once again, I'm, you know, I know we're all taking some time, which I think is great to make sure that we get the wind turbines in the correct place, and I think that's a very wise move on the supervisor's part, but, I mean, we already have wind turbines in Harding County down around Garden City. I mean, I, the people I know that I've, you know, a couple that I've talked to said that they have had no problems with them, you know, they haven't seen any adverse effects. I did speak to some people out of county who have them, they said they really have seen no adverse effects, so. But I think you guys are very wise to make sure we get them placed in the correct spot.
Yeah, and one of the concerns that I've had addressed to me is, you know, why don't we just take an ordinance from Grundy County or Palo Alto County and rubber stamp it, you know, and make it our own? And when I've had those conversations, I've had to ask the one county supervisor from Grundy County, you know, how many state parks do you have in Grundy County? None. How many drainage districts do you have in Grundy County? One, we have one, and I, well, we have over 200. How many county campgrounds do you have? And, well, we have one. Well, we have numerous. And so, it's not apples to apples. So, one of the reasons that we've tapped the brakes here is, so in six weeks, six months, six years, somebody from the Conservation Board can't say, well, you didn't even give us a voice in this, or the 911 Commission, you didn't give us a voice. And so, I'm glad you understand that, but boy, I've taken some really harsh criticism of, you just need to do this, you don't want it to happen, and we want, you know, we had a 12-year-old, or a 2012 ordinance, and everybody in here that's in any type of professional industry or even a skilled trade, rules and regulations change, so we need to go back and look at those and make sure that we're up to date and everything. So, yeah, but that's one of the biggest criticisms I've taken is, you guys just need to, you know, hurry up and do this. And I think that that's not good open and public, you know, government. It also has brought me to the point where I've realized how important an appointment to the board, the Planning and Zoning Board is, the Board of Adjustment, the Conservation Board, the 911 Commission involvement of our city leaders, those are all important things that sometimes I think we took for granted or, oh, they're not important, and I couldn't be farther from the truth when you're dealing with an item like this, so.
Absolutely, we don't want them in airspace for the airport.
Right.
I think you, everybody wants them, you know, can argue if we can get them in the right place.
Right, absolutely, yeah. And, and so the perception is that I don't want this project, couldn't be any farther from the truth, I want it just done right the first time, rather than coming back and, well, shame on Josh, because you knew that that was two miles from a wetland and now, you know, the African-spotted mosquito fly is going to be endangered. Well, you know, we're all doing our best to address every variable, and we've got processes in place where, you know, Planning and Zoning Board met again last night, they met a week ago, I mean, they're going to keep meeting and do their due diligence, so, you know, we have to trust the process. And I appreciate your confidence.
There's also more and more information coming out about health issues of people living around these things, issues that livestock producers are coming up with, doctors coming out making statements about the issues that people are starting to have. You know, we just need to do due diligence for the citizens of Harding County.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, I mean, and there's a lot of misinformation too. I mean, I've seen a lot of things that, you know, when you ask for the background information or where that science came from, nobody can give you the answer.
Right.
Like I said, in the right place, I think they'd be a boon to the county.
Yep.
And I'm glad you guys are taking your time and working with, coming in here to put those in.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
So, the time we're taking on these ordinances is that, I know it's probably distracting, but are you concerned of it yet at this point?
So, we, there's sufficient time before we would plan on applying for a permit. I do feel that it's being done, it seems like a more expedited manner, so sometimes it's tough to try to gather all the information and be able to respond appropriately, just because it seems like it's kind of moving very quickly. But, in terms of when the actual ordinance gets updated and the process is done, I don't think there's any real impact on what we're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. And I would like to throw up one thing too, is the handoff that I gave you, I didn't mention there's a, there's an example of a road and drainage district agreement. It's not affiliated with us, it's from another project up in Worth County, but it's just an example of what another county has done with a different developer that we're not affiliated with for a road and drainage agreement.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks.
I might just address a little bit on the health and livestock issues. And you have to do, as Joey pointed out, you have to look at where those studies are coming from. And so, I happened to talk to someone in O'Brien County. It's a large dairy operation up there, they've got about 350-some turbines around them. Harvey Van Ast, and he says, you know, they've been, they've been under them now for seven, eight years, he says, we've seen absolutely no difference in any stillbirths, any pregnancy rates in our cattle, and it's absolutely shown no drop in our milk production. So, he says he's totally fine with them, he's had no problems, no issues. So, anecdotal evidence may be, but practical evidence is somebody right here in Iowa is operating right underneath.
And see, I'd honestly, Mark, I'd rather hear that than a study that somebody's bought and paid for from the University of Wyoming or the University of, you know, Pittsburgh, because I worked in clinical pharmacology research, and when I'd get my paperwork, who was buying and paying for the study, of course, they wanted certain, they wanted the outcome a certain way, and so, the study that the FDA approved, you know, was one way, yet they would apply for amendments to railroad the study to meet, you know, what the drug maker wanted. So, I trust, I would rather trust a local, you know, milk producer or poultry producer, I'd rather go out and, you know, see, you know, their numbers and hear it, look them in the eye than somebody at a university that's being paid for science, so, but.
My favorite one was that for once we had north of Iowa Falls, it was bringing in a lot more cold air.
Absolutely, yes, yeah, but warm hearts.
Polar vote.
Yes.
No, I liked the one that were a certain person claimed that they caused cancer.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to wrap this up if there weren't any more questions.
So, I know they are working on a setback ordinance, and we received a copy of that last week, and I think that part of that was addressing the two-times turbine height limit for like non-dwelling units, property lines, power lines, public right-of-ways. I think that was based on an EMREL study is what we were provided, and the EMREL study has been retracted by EMREL that specified that two-times height due to an error in the conclusion of the study and the process.
Okay.
That two-times setback requirement that's in there would basically make the project not viable.
Okay.
We did a buildable area map on Friday using the standard setbacks, which was what the county had in the previous ordinance, the old ordinance for setbacks, gave us about 2,400 acres of buildable area of land that we could actually site a turbine in based on high-level information. With two-times setback that's in there now, it brings that to 67 acres. That pretty much makes the project not viable at all.
Okay, good to know. Thank you, Josh.
Can you explain what EMREL is?
Yes, thank you.
EMREL is the National Renewable Energy Laboratory. So, it's a, it's a federal research facility, and they're, they have an office in Golden, Colorado, and they've got a test farm that's north of Golden on the front range of the mountains. So, they do a lot of various simulation, load testing, all kinds of various things regarding, regarding winds.
And solar.
And solar now, and transmission lines.
Yeah, it's a cool place.
Yeah, it's definitely neat.
You know, on the flip side of the dairy thing, there's a dairy farmer in Wisconsin that claims the opposite of what the guy you talked to says.
You know what happens is a lot of people have problems, they want to blame it on something, and this is something new.
Hey, yeah, we're getting into a debate, I'm going to, I'm going to wrap, wrap this up, and were there any other public comments outside of windmills? And generators? Any other business?
No, sir.
Just a reminder, you guys will be here if people want to talk to you afterwards, and then I can ask for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Yeah, drainage meeting will immediately follow, so would you prefer discussions outside the room so we can continue drainage?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Lance. That's all I had.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.